All right, so we're calling the meeting. Please cease your conversations and join us here at the dais, those of you who are councilors. This meeting is to discuss the proposed amendments, zoning amendments, municipal harbor plan, Route 16 to BH marijuana establishment, marijuana ordinance change, communication from the planning board and the communication from the city solicitor. I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Counselor Vido.
President.
Yeah. Counselor Visioneda.
President.
Counselor Ray Cupro.
Yeah.
Counselor Garcia. Counselor Vega Maldonado.
President.
Yeah. Counselor Robinson.
Yeah.
Counselor Rodriguez.
President.
Counselor Lopez.
Yeah.
Counselor Teala.
Yeah.
Counselor Brown.
Yeah.
And Counselor Zabit.
President.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine members present.
Okay. The first thing that I will do is I will read the communication from the planning board. That was sent to us in regards to what we had sent back in November, October of last year. Dear Counselor Visioneda, at the regular meeting, the city planning board held a meeting on Tuesday, December 15th, at which a quorum was present and the public hearing was held. The planning board voted on the following amendments on its agenda. They voted in favor of the density and the change in the R2, density rather, in the R2 zone, amendments one through three. In the letter from the council and from the city manager, voted to recommend that the council approve the amendments as presented on a seven to one zero vote. They also voted to approve the minor changes to density in the R1 zone, amendment number four, in the letter from the city council. They voted to approve the zoning changes in the Park Square parcels, which was amendment number five. They voted to approve, recommend city council approval of the zoning change, I'm sorry. The zoning change in downtown parking was voted unanimously to be amended or redrafted. They had concerns relative to the hours of the parking. The members felt that the 12:00 AM to 5:00 AM time period has delineated the cover and the cover letter was not convenient for residents. Also, they had concerns relative to the current downtown districts, residents who hold a sticker in the current program. They specifically asked who would qualify for the new program, that was not specified. And they also spoke about putting a limit on the number of passes available for each residential unit, there was no limits. On the mixed use overlay district for the area adjacent to the new commuter rail, that is the area off of Vale Street behind the former Chelsea Clark, they voted unanimously for the council to approve it. They also allowed, to allow residential use on the first floor, to the issuance of a special permit. And additional uses of mixed use development and redevelopment were with residential units above. They eliminated the maximum requirement of seven stories to a building height of no less than four stories and not more than 100 feet in height. The increase in the off-street parking requirements was to 1.5, 1 point spaces per unit in that area also. Regarding the municipal harbor plan, the city, the planning board voted to recommend that the city council approve the amendments as proposed, seven to one. Regarding marijuana retail delivery services, they voted that the city council approved that amendment proposed, and that was approved on a six to one passage. And again, that was for delivery services in the residential areas, home-based deliveries. On the zoning changes on Garfield Ave, Wesley Street, Adams Street parcels as proposed, they voted unanimously to revise the proposed amendments and change the zoning district from an R1 to an R2 business zone. Those were the recommendations from the planning board. I also have a communication from our city solicitor. In that regard, she writes, "On January 14th, 2021, the governor signed into law an act that among other matters included several zoning changes and amendments to MGL 48. The most important in this new change is reduces the voting thresholds for adoption or amendments by certain bylaws and ordinances. We normally adopt zoning amendments by a two-thirds vote. However, the new law amends chapter 48, section five, that reduces the need to amend or approve certain ordinances. Now, a simple majority will allow the following. A vote to amend a zoning ordinance to allow the following as a right. Multi-family housing or mixed-use development in the eligible zones or locations. Accessory dwelling units, whether within the principal development or detached in the same lot. And open space residential development. Also, a vote to amend a zoning ordinance to allow any of the following by special permit. Multi-family housing or mixed-use development in the eligible location or zones. An increase in the permissible density or population of intensity of a particular loose use in proposed multi-family or mixed-use development pursuant to MGL 40A, section nine. Accessory dwelling units and a detached structure on the same lot. A reduction in the amount of parking required for residential or mixed-use development pursuant to MGL 40A, section A. A vote to amend zoning ordinances that provides transfer of development rights, zoning or natural resource production zoning, as long as it does not reduce the maximal number of housing units. And a zoning, any amendment to zoning ordinance that modifies the dimensional requirements such as bulk and height of structures, yard sizes, lots, areas, setbacks, open space, parking, and building coverage requirements to allow for additional housing units beyond what would otherwise be permitted under existing ordinances. Also allowed is a vote by majority to adopt a smart growth district. For example, Garrish Ave Smart Growth District pursuant to MGL 40, chapter 40R, section three." Those are the communications that we had sent, along with the packet of the amendments. At this time, I'm going to ask if the, John DePriest, would you please step up and just give us a refresher of those zoning amendments that were recommended by the zoning, by the, rather, the planning board? And just, I guess, we'll ask Carl on the waterfront, but you can just stick to the non-waterfront issues that we had discussed.
Okay, so the first--
Can everybody at home hear him? Okay, I just want to make sure that you're up into the microphone, thank you.
So the first three amendments are relative to the change in density in the R2 district. Amendment number one would just change the designation of the units, one to six or seven plus. Amendment two would actually change, for one to six units, it would change the lot size, 3,500 square feet for the first unit and 1,000 for each additional unit. And for the seven-plus units would be 3,500 for the first unit and 950 for each additional unit, with a minimum of 10,000 square feet. Amendment three revises the minimum open space requirement from 350 down to 100 square Amendment four is the R1 density, it changes the minimum lot size per dwelling unit from 3,500 to 3,100, and the minimum lot size from 7,500 to 6,000. Amendment number five is a zoning map change. It basically brings these, those parcels in around and including the chicken--
Polo Campero. Polo Campero.
Polo Campero from Residence Two to BR, which is the downtown district. Amendment number six is the off-street parking, which basically sets up a new off-street, on-street parking, parking program for the downtown only. It would be by permit for the downtown only.
That was the only amendment that was not approved by the, or recommended by the planning board, correct?
Not recommended for approval, correct. Or not recommended for approval at all.
They had four basic-- Through the chair, we, in the letter, they stated, in the letter that I read earlier from the planning board, it stated that their concerns, the planning board concerns were--
They had a concern in the cover letter that accompanied that, there was a mention of enforcement between midnight and 5:00 AM, and they felt that was a, it was not, they would have to get up at midnight to move and 5:00 AM to move, and they just felt it was, it did not suit the, was suitable for residential. And then they objected to, they felt that it was a violation of the ordinance that the council had approved previously for, to allow, where relief was granted, units would not get permission to park on-street, basically. They felt that that was a violation of that council order. And then they had a concern about who would be eligible to participate, and they also had a concern relative to what would happen to those residents in downtown who already have residence sticker parking. Would they be able to maintain those stickers, or would they be required to get the new sticker program?
Go ahead, continue.
So amendment number seven creates the mixed-use overlay district up in the Everett Ave North area, it's basically in that parcel, parcels bounded by Everett Ave, the Everett border, and the railroad tracks. We create a mixed-use overlay district to promote residential development in that area. Here, again, the planning board made some recommendations as to allow for residential development on the first floor, to eliminate the seven-story limit, because there's already a hundred-foot limit in there, and to, one more.
And if you're talking about--
Yes, yes, yes. And there was one more change, and I'm sorry, I can't recall it off the top of my head, but it was--
Do you have one more?
Yes, one more change that they recommended, height, parking, and--
To allow residential here on the first floor by special--
Right, oh, yeah. That one, and the parking, then I couldn't remember, was the parking, to increase the off-street parking requirement from .5 per unit to one per unit.
So if I just could, all of these, this particular package of zoning proposals, with the exception of the downtown parking one that the planning board did not recommend, all the others, all of which the planning board did recommend, they're all really aimed at creating some greater density. So in the R1 district, which is the most restrictive of our zoning districts, it allows only one and two family homes, this would simply reduce the lot size from 7,500 to 6,000 square feet, and allow some additional lots to be built upon. In the R2, it's to try to create some density more consistent with the R3 district, which right now by special permit is about 45 units an acre, we're trying to create something similar, a little less in the R2 district that looks quite the same as the R3 district. In the Park Square area, one side of that street is downtown retail business, there was no reason the other side of that square shouldn't be the same, and we think it'll help to spur the redevelopment of that Polo Campero site. And the overlay district, which is in that triangular area that includes all of that junkyard area in behind where Fairfield is building, and includes the piece of the Stop and Shop site that's in Chelsea, this will allow residential development. Right now, residential development is completely prohibited in that triangular area. So it's all an effort to create some opportunity for housing development.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Can I ask a question about amendment number five?
Yes, go right ahead.
So that is just, if we approve that amendment, that means that Polo Campero gets included into the residential district, that's the only thing that changes there?
No, that whole block is getting, the proposal is to rezone that whole Polo Campero block that encompasses that whole block around Polo Campero, Ellsworth Street, down Congress. There's about five parcels, there's actually, there's five parcels that would be rezoned. It's that whole block that sort of fronts on the Polo Campero site.
Can, can you tell me the before and after? What is it exactly that's changing?
Right now, that is R2, there's not much you can build on that, it's an R2 district, it's constrained as our current R2 district is right now. It's not a business district, so there's not much you can build business-wise on that parcel without lots of zoning relief. What we're proposing is to treat that area just like the area across the street where the hardware store is, where commercial shops are, that's all retail business, that's all zone downtown retail business. We're proposing the other side of the street should be zoned the same, downtown retail business.
Okay, thank you so much, thank you, Mr. President.
One, one other question, Tom and John. The planning board had voted to increase the parking requirement in the overlay district from .5 to one.
To one, correct.
But in front of us right now is still the original .5, is that correct? Or do we have to, in order to go with the recommendation by the planning board, that also would have to be amended tonight, correct?
It should be amended on the floor to adopt the changes proposed by the planning board, yes.
Okay, just, I want to make that clear, that wasn't, you know, understood earlier.
If you adopt it as is, you will adopt the original. So to adopt the planning board changes, you have to make an amendment on the floor to accept the planning board changes.
Okay. Counselor Cupro.
So, you're gonna do what Park Street is, what Polo Campero is, right?
Correct.
So you're gonna make that an area where you're gonna build many apartments, and let's say one day Kershaw decides to disappear, you can build the same thing on that side. You're gonna change that side to make it the same as Broadway.
You already can build where Kershaw is, they're already zoned retail business. What I'm suggesting is the other side of the street should be treated the same. They should both be zoned, they're on both sides of this commercial square, one is zoned commercial, retail business, the Kershaw side, the other side isn't, it's zoned residential.
So, and when if that does, when this goes true, how is the parking situation gonna be affected? Are you gonna follow the same rules as you're doing in downtown, where you're gonna give, you're gonna build all these apartment builders, let's say, right? And then, you're gonna, the people here, they have, they don't require one spot, they say they require one spot, but then never do, whatever it is, and then they're gonna be allowed to go into the, the same way as people that lived there to get a residence sticker, that area is already congested as it is?
Right, so if you don't make, if you don't make any change, there'll be, any development on that site will be treated just like any current development is treated in the downtown, which is, if you get any parking relief, your tenants are not allowed to get a residential sticker.
So in other words, if, when they build, the people there cannot park their cars outside?
Correct.
And what is, okay, that's, and another question I have too, is, over here it says you can go up 100 feet, right?
In the overlay district.
On the overlay, right?
That's a different district.
100 feet, right?
That's a different district.
It's further down--
A little downer than that, it's like if you go a little up--
By Route 16.
Let's say you have Essex Street and up over that, you know?
Route 16, behind Stop and Shop, behind Chelsea Clark.
Over that place?
Yes.
So 100 feet, was that 10 stories?
That's about 10 stories.
Roughly nine stories, right?
Nine stories.
In modern construction, it's closer to seven or eight, because the old stories used to be nine to 10 feet, now they're 12 to 14 feet, because they usually put the air conditioning ducts and all that, so--
So nine stories, let's say nine stories.
We can't hear John.
John, they can't hear you, so speak, you speak in the mic.
100 feet is, in modern construction, is actually closer to seven to eight stories. The old construction, each story was about 10 feet, but however, on the new construction, they usually go 12 to 14 feet, because they're adding all the utilities on the ceilings, like air conditioning ducts, heating ducts, and stuff like that.
Okay.
But can I, can I ask another question?
You may.
Over here, you have R1 and R2, right? Over here, in R1, you can one to two units per dwelling, right, of 3,500 square feet, 6,000 square feet total. In R2, you have one to six units, 3,500 square feet, one unit for every 1,000 additional units. And then up here, you got only 5,000 square feet. Why is that big discrepancy between R1 and R2? R1, you can build two units, and you have 6,000 square feet, then you need an additional 3,100 square feet to build an additional unit.
Correct.
And R, my district, more or less, or anybody's district that's part of it, they can build one to six units. Then every 3,500 additional feet, they can build each one for another 1,000 feet. So now, what you're saying is, here you're dense to the gills, and we're gonna dense you some more. Over there, you're not dense, and you're gonna, and you're not gonna bury them. At least, if you were gonna do, I would amend to put one to three units, not one to two. Here, and that's only going half, or what you're proposing to do on my side, or on anybody's side that's on R2, that's not even half. Now, I can understand you wanted to make it fairly, right, whatever it is, but the answer would probably be, because I spoke to Mr. DePriest before, and he told me, the answer is predominantly this side can handle it, and that side can't. So, how does it make a difference then? This side can handle it, which is already buried, you can't even move as it is, and that side can't. So, you know, I can, I can agree with what you're proposing, I got no issue with it. The only proposal I want to see difference is, why one to two, why don't you make it one to three? That's halfway.
So I would say that we weren't trying, the reason we did that is, we weren't proposing to change any of the existing residential uses in either of those districts. So right now, the residential uses that are allowed on the R2 district are apartment buildings, you can build as many units as you wish, it's, the only limitation is the size of your lot. In the R1 district right now, and historically, you did not have that right, you can only build a one-family or a two-family, that's all you can build. You can build much more in the R2 right now, except you're, you're limited by the size of your lot, but there's no prohibition against building a three, four, five, or six-family unit in R2. There currently is in the R1, and we did not propose to change that. The council certainly could if they wished, but that district is predominantly single and two-family homes, and historically, that use has been limited to that amount in that district, and we did not propose to change it.
But, but the part that I can't understand, right, Tom, is that, I can understand what you're saying halfway, okay? That district has never been like that, and, but then why are you burying this side? Because if you're proposing to do, I can, why can't you go halfway? Look, these people on this side pay the same taxes as the people on that side. They're not, they're not any different, so you're gonna bury them here, and you're not gonna bury the other side. And I'm not proposing to bury the other side, that's not what I want. I want at least half here. Here you propose it one to two, why can't it be one to three? Why does it have to be one to two?
The answer provided was the following, in the R2, there are currently multifamilies allowed in that zone.
Yeah.
That has not changed, nor will that change here, multifamilies will continue to be allowed in the R2 zone. Multifamilies being three families, four families, and six are allowed in R2. All that changed was a difference in lot size.
Yeah.
But, but the type of multifamilies is consistent, there is no introduction of any new use in an R2, solely in acceptance that 7,500 square foot lots are not found, more likely 5,000 square foot lots, which is more consistent with what actual lot sizes are in the R2. In the R1, the reply was, we have minimized, or they're proposing to minimize the lot sizes in the R1, but the use is consistent, just as it remains consistent in the R2, which is, right now, in R1s, whether it be Soldier's Home, Mill Hill, or Prattville, R1 is simply ones and two families. We are decreasing the lot sizes in those areas. So you're consistent, we haven't changed anything, and we're not about to, if you want to make an introduction to allow multifamilies in those R1s, you're free to make the amendment, but you're introducing something that is currently not allowed. Right now, as the city manager stated, there are no multi, multifamilies are allowed in the R2, and that is consistent with what has been presented.
I understand what you're saying, Mr. Roy, I got you, Mr. President, I know. You're saying predominantly we don't allow it there, we allow it here, but what you're doing is a disparity, it's really unfair, because it's not allowed on that side, they not allowed to get it, but this side, which is predominantly three and four, five, six, whatever it is, and there's no room to park at all, you're relaxing the lot size, and you're relaxing the amount of units you can build on that lot, but that side, you're not allowing, you're not relaxing nothing, you're relaxing one and two, which is predominantly one and two all the time. So the only thing, you're not changing anything on that side at all. So why don't we develop the whole city the same way? What's wrong with developing all the same? Why does it have to be this side and that's, that side because it's more, it's never been done that way?
Well, this is the process of community planning, and this is how a master plan gets developed, and you present, and you present your opinion, and so does the planning board made of community members, accept it or not accept it. And at the end of the day, there was no support for increasing density in the R1s. So that's what you have to live with, part of community planning, and you say fairness is democracy. So democracy says--
I thought we were the one that accepted. Don't we accept, don't the council themselves have a decision, and what goes on and on? If the planning board says we're gonna build 100 units, and the council says, well, my area can't build 100 units, we--
Then you get the chance to vote with your fellow colleagues who also represent R2s and see if they want to change it, that's all I can say.
So could I, I just do want to add one point, my, my intention here is not to bury the R2 district. Honestly, this proposal had came in response to a series of complaints I received from Chelsea homeowners, owners, owner-occupied people in the R2 district, who were complaining to me that their ability to add units was being constrained far beyond what people right across the street or a few streets over in the R3 district could do. And they said, that district looks just like ours, why is our district so constrained on density and that district is not? And I was, I was persuaded by that argument, and so this is an effort to try to create some parity between the R3 district, the Spencer-- some parity between the R3 district, the Spencer Ave area, and the R2 district, which look quite similar in many respects.
I commend you for trying, I commend you for trying to do that, Tom. I get your point. I get, but, I get what you're trying to do, but it's really not fair. If you're gonna build on a lot size on R2, and I can understand your point in R1, at least make it halfway. Don't do it eighty to twenty, make it fair. Instead of one to two, allow to build threes. Where I am, you're allowing to build six or more accord, because here, you say here, you have, but your figures are here. One area you got six thousand, and you can build one to two. One area you got five thousand, you can build one to six, plus each additional unit, you need one thousand, and the other area, you need three thousand five hundred. So how is it fair? It's, it's really, I'm, I only wanna go halfway. I only wanna meet you halfway, okay? One to two, make it three, and that's only going halfway. That's not even burying anything, because you can do one and two. On my side, it's completely different. You're increasing it. You can build, you can build as much as you want. You got a ten thousand square foot lot, you can build twenty units.
It's a fair point. I guess I would say, unlike in this situation where I've heard from homeowners in the R2 district about this concern, and they asked me to try to address it, I've never heard any, in the time I've been here, it's only been five and a half years, so it's not forever, but I have never yet had an R1 owner come to me and say, I'd like to be able to change the zoning to build a three-family home. It's just, it's not a demand that I'm getting.
What if somebody does want to? What if somebody wants to build a three-family home in that area?
They cannot do it.
Why they should be allowed to build it? You're gonna allow to build six in mine's?
You could, the council, the council could. I'm just saying, the council could make this change. I'm not recommending it, because I haven't been persuaded this is a demand of the residents in that area.
Okay, Tom, I see what you're saying, but here's, I, I'll make you an example, okay? They built a house on Suffolk Street on three thousand square feet. Every day, the poor people complain to me, every day, they got no way to park, they allowed to build that on three thousand square feet, right? And what's that, a four-family, three, four-family, whatever it is? It's, it's a big, big thing in a small, little spot. I got no issue with you trying to build, right? I have no problem with this. The only problem I have is, try to be at least half fair. You don't have to be all fair. What I'm saying is, if you can build one to six on five thousand, why can't you build one to three on six thousand? And that's not even half. Why can't you do that? Is that such a bad thing? You telling me, well, we can't do it there, because that's never been that way.
I'm not telling you can't.
But over here, we can, we can bury you all the time.
I didn't propose it, that doesn't mean the council can't pursue.
Well, that's up to us. You can leave it up to us, right? And we can, and we can decide to choose if we wish to do it or not. Isn't that the same thing with this right now? It's up to us. The planning board can put all they want, but it's us that determine if we want it or not.
That's correct, and I mentioned it earlier. If you want to propose it, and you can get your colleagues to go with it.
That's what I wanna, what I'm saying.
Where, I think, I think you've beat it enough, and you've stated your opinion enough.
Yeah, I'm gonna propose that. I figure it's fair.
Mr. President, point of clarity?
We're moving on.
Mr. President?
Yes, Councilor.
I, I just have a question, because this is so convoluted, and there's so much in front of us right now. When we finally go vote, are we voting by amendment?
We can vote, we can make, we can do it by amendment.
Okay, because this is a law.
I would, I would strongly suggest, in fact, almost say, Cheryl's not here, but you have to do it by amendment, because some of these amendments require a two-thirds vote still, and some of them now only require a majority.
A simple majority. Okay, so this specific conversation with Councilor Cooper and Mr. Ambrosino has to do with Amendment number five, correct?
No, it has to do with Amendments one to four.
Oh, crap, okay, got it.
One to three involve the R2 district, and Amendment four involves the R1 district.
All right, thank you.
Through the chair, Councilor Robinson.
Right now, if they're gonna be presented for any changes.
That's correct. So John, if you wanna continue, we were on the Pollo Campero spot, I think we were, and, let me see here, that was Amendment number seven.
We, we did Amendment number seven, which was the mixed use. The Ovalay District, and the, the next one after that is the Harbor Front, but I was going to, if it's okay with Carl, I was going to skip and go directly to the.
Go right ahead.
Marijuana establishment, and then let Carl take over after that.
All right, they'll skip the waterfront, that'll be Carl's domain, and I'll let you go on to delivery-only establishment, marijuana.
All right, so delivery-only establishment has a number of amendments themselves. The first one would allow the office use only as an accessory use in any residential district, and there's some guidelines, there's no storage of marijuana products, no change in residential character, operated by a resident of the building, no more one employee, no more than one employee and several others, to keep it still a residential character to it. Amendment two would extend the district in which marijuana retailer is allowed to include the BR and the BR2 districts. Amendment, number three would permit delivery-only marijuana establishments in the BR, BR2, BH, SC, I, LI, LI2, and NHC districts by right, and permits marijuana transporter in the BH, SC, and I districts, I districts by special permit. Amendment number four require one parking space for each delivery vehicle, and the number, Amendment number five would require the, all vehicles used for marijuana transport establishments to be registered in the city of Chelsea. Then, the next amendment was to, another map amendment, that's the rezoning of the areas, the parcels along Garfield Avenue, Beer Beach Parkway. The amendment was to change from the R1 district to a BH district, the Planning Board recommended R1 to be R2 district.
So if we wanted to adopt that amendment, per the zone, per the recommendation of the Planning Board, we'd have to say BR2 or BR, correct?
Correct, BR2.
Because if we adopt it as is, it would be the BH.
H, correct.
So to follow the recommendation of the Planning Board, it would be a.
BR2 district.
A BR2.
BR2 district is, is intended to be a neighborhood business-type district.
Correct. And the, and the current uses in that neighborhood fall under those are allowed uses?
Restaurants and retail.
And if you wanna speak again to my colleagues as to why you recommended not to do a business highway zone?
Because the business highway zone was a zone more for highway-type uses, used car sales, gas stations and the like. And it was felt that the BR2 would be more compatible with the adjacent area, and there were residents there who had spoken at the Planning Board meeting, who were opposed to BH, but were not as opposed to the BR2 district.
So the idea being, we didn't wanna see an auto lot be open under a right.
Correct.
But the existing uses, the convenience store.
Something that would serve the neighborhood as opposed to serving the traveling, travelers.
Okay. Okay, so we're gonna have Carl. If there's no other questions to John at this moment from my colleagues, I'll invite John to come up and start with the waterfront rezoning issues. I think in particular, Carl, the questions were more about not the water side, but more on the upland portion. I know that I had planned to make, I wanted to understand fully, I think I was surprised by the complete list of allowed uses in the upland waterfront zone. So can you just make sure you, we understand, in this rezoning, the board agreed with the argument that the non-water side of this area should allow the suggested uses that I had proposed, that included mixed retail and retail uses currently allowed in either the downtown area or in neighborhood business zones. But are there still any maritime allowed uses in this port, upland port zone on the non-water side? I can't hear you. Can you unmute yourself? Nope. Do we get tech? Uh, let me see. We're having technical difficulties there, Carl, hold on.
How about now?
Now, now it's better. We're good, we're good.
I switched microphones.
Okay.
So, our intent was to allow light manufacturing and all of the neighborhood accessory uses that you had proposed in your original submission. So to the extent that maritime support use fits into those categories, it would be allowed?
So, this, so originally, there was a proposal for the creation of what was, at one meeting, I recall, you know, this idea of creating an industrial, light industrial buffer zone, and the residents that showed up that night, if you recall, were not pleased with it, because there were still, you know, a lot of residents right next to these lots. And so my understanding was that the new upland was gonna zone out those industrial, light industrial zones along those parcels, and that meant everything on marginal that is not on the water side, and everything on Suffolk Street were not gonna be still allowed for industrial use. You're stating that light industrial would still be allowed next to those residential, residents on, along Suffolk and Shertlift and Hawthorne?
Um, not, so it would be allowed on marginal with uses transitioning to more neighborhood residential on Suffolk?
So explain to me right now, in the Portland, I'm sorry, waterfront upland district, what are light industrial, what are industrial uses that would be allowed? What does that entail?
Um, let me, I gotta go bring up the table of uses, and we can walk through it.
Because there's, you know, it's hard for us to see, because there's no accompaniment on the, on, on the amendments, a list of allowed uses, and I think that would make.
There was an attachment to it, which is the modifications to the use table, and that goes.
That the council would have to approve. It was, it was attached to my September 10th letter. It's a whole table of proposed uses for the port and the waterfront upland new districts. And you can, I can certainly get copies of that for the councils, I thought you had this. This is what was before the zoning, this was before the Planning Board, and it was presented to you in my cover letter on September 10th.
I think you provided me an email that was, again, on this, and I may be able to.
So it's attached to my, if you have my September 10th letter submitted to the council, it's an attachment to that letter. And it's a table of uses, and it outlines every use proposed, and I can certainly make copies of that if you wanna take a five-minute break.
Correct. So if we wanted just, because the list of, the list of uses that I had sent and what was talked about at the Planning Board, um, hold on one second. Through the chair, go right ahead.
Your Office Two, Naval Hospital Development, Naval Hospital Development Commercial District, is that what you're referring to?
It's this table of uses that looks like this. So it's attached to my September 10th letter to the council. I can certainly take, I thought you had this before you, but I can certainly take five minutes and just make you a copy of this.
Um, I have any, I have, I have a use table in front of me, and I'll read it off, but I'll have Fatima send this to my colleagues so they understand, but I'll read off, I know what I, I know what was introduced, but, and I think I sent a few of this to my colleagues of what was allowed, so.
Yes, so everything that changed is highlighted in yellow.
Highlighted in yellow. So you are allowing institutional uses, including marine research, education, laboratory facilities, not including overnight accommodations, boat and accessory sales, service and rental establishments are still allowed.
Yep.
Boat storage facilities would be allowed on the non-water side.
Yep.
Boat building and ship building, because we've seen a lot of that on that side, and repair maintenance is seeking six-fifties. Ferries and excursions would still be allowed on the non-water side, according to the recommendations here.
No, that's a no. Ferries and excursions, facilities in the waterfront upland is a no.
Oh, sorry, that's a no, you're correct. I have harbor and marine supply services. Chandeliers, ship supply, but not including the bunkering would still be allowed.
Just most of these uses are allowed only by special permit, so that'd have to be a process.
Right, but they are, yeah, so you have marine offices, including without limitation officers, owners of wharves, naval architects, seafood brokers, facilities, oh no, not that one. You have, a marine industrial-related museum, okay, we'll get a chance of that happening. Fabrication of marine-related goods, marine industrial welding, marine repair services, marine machine shops, and related storage facilities, allowed by special permit. Again, marine-related wholesale business, warehousing and storage. We have enclosed seafood processing, seafood packaging and packaging, seafood loading and seafood distribution, still allowed. So I'm just wondering, the fact that, A, none of this has ever occurred, been asked for, in the forty years of that waterfront zoning, what is the reason behind keeping that there and not zone it out to the recommendations that the Planning Board seems so wholeheartedly endorsing, which were retail uses, mixed use, commercial uses that would employ eighty percent of essential employees here in the city of Chelsea? Why are we still holding on to something that hasn't happened there in the last fifty years?
Um, because.
We're just trying to allow for the possibility of these uses there. I mean, they're all, most of these are by special permit, so we would have a say as to whether we want them or not. Creating all, all no's just constrains the potential uses there. I think we're trying to see, can we attract uses to that side of Marginal Street?
What I'm saying is, it's been fifty years, and none of those uses have ever come forth with it being allowed. So given the environment that we're in, what even provides, if anything, would give a hiccup to what is actually occurring all and around greater Boston? I don't see any of that development at all.
I just.
And when, and, and let me just follow that up, as I participated and I watched keenly. And when the, and, and let me just follow that up, as I participated and I watched keenly, uh, the waterfront planning meeting of the East Boston, right on the other side. And there's not one marine use zoned, allowed use on the same Chelsea Creek on the non-water side of East Boston. Nothing at all. It is completely mixed-use residential. And yet somehow, without one, one, not one interest ever displayed in our waterfront for that, I don't understand why we're holding on to that for the, you know, something that's been not there for the last fifty years.
Honestly, I don't see the harm in allowing uses by special permit. And if the demand is for the kind of residential development that you're talking about, it's allowed in here by right on this side. So that, if that's the use that the market's gonna demand, that's likely the use that's going to occur.
Well, what about the argument of zoning it out so that you are basically showing exactly and forcing the hand of what type of development the community is so highly in favor of? And not allowing something that may not actually be as economically favorable to the community?
I think, personally, I think I'd like to see commercial uses on that corridor as opposed to all residential development.
Or retail?
Or re- retail's allowed. I mean, I'd love to see retail there. Retail is allowed there.
Okay. Counselor Recupro.
Mr. Tom, I wanna ask a question. Is it better for the city to keep, uh-
On the community?
Go ahead.
Is it better for the city to keep, let's say, you said, what would you rather have? Residential or commercial? Who makes more money, residential or commercial? Who, who does the city profit by having more?
On that corridor-
More residential or more commercial?
On that corridor, I'd prefer to see commercial.
Huh?
I'd prefer to see commercial on that corridor.
And the commer- why, why, why is that? Because the commercial gives us twice as much money?
Commercial tends to generate more tax dollars. It provides jobs. And that's a heavy trucking corridor, so there are gonna be conflicts if residential front doors exist on that corridor.
Is that why you're, you're still proposing to keep, uh, the marina and all these other stuff there?
I think we're just proposing to try to keep as many options possible to give as many possibilities to developers. But residential is allowed by right, so it's certainly a use that might happen there.
But you, you would rather see commercial because it's more of a tax revenue for our city?
That would be my personal preference, but we've allowed residential as a matter of right.
Okay.
I think the question is whether or not you think allowing those marine uses makes sense to put next to those homes.
So what if we allow commercial and-
I'm talking marine and light industrial. Do you wanna see fish plants next there? Do you wanna see a boatyard down there?
I, I would rather see, uh, stores and all kinds of stuff there too. I'm in favor of that too. There's nothing wrong with wanting to make it. Stores is commercial and business, right? Isn't it the same thing in some ways?
Yeah.
Isn't it doing it?
Well, that's what we're doing in Pollo Campero. I mean, basically, what I'm encouraging down in that corridor is what's going on in Pollo Campero.
In Pollo Campero, we're getting rid of the businesses in that residential, right?
With business on below.
We're doing the opposite.
We're do, we're keeping the businesses on a ground level.
But you're increasing on top?
That's correct.
So is that the same thing we're gonna propose to do on the waterfront?
That's correct.
So that you keep the businesses in the bottom and you increase on top?
That's yes.
Okay. I understand.
Counsel Robinson, any questions?
I, I call for special permits if we wanna be allowed certain uses to take place down there. Is that correct?
Yeah, most of this, most of these commercial uses would require a special permit. So there'd be plenty of ability for neighbors to understand the proposal, for the boards to weigh in on them. The one thing that's allowed by right, however, is residential uses. The same as is allowed by right right now, which is thirty-five units in acre. We have not changed that.
Right. So if there were small businesses that were looking to come and go in that area, they would have to apply for a special permit?
Depending on the use, it's likely to be a required special permit, yes.
Thanks.
Um, we also have on the agenda for Monday, a-
Mr. President, can I, can I ask a question?
Yes.
Yeah, it's not so much of a question, maybe it's just a statement. Um, I'd like to just piggyback on what you were stating. Uh, well, I think we should encourage the residents to know uh, before we adopt any this year, especially in this area here, what are some of the potential, um, proposals, if there are? And, you know, try to get some feedback to see exactly what residents would like to have there. Because there are already existing places, dwellings there. And, um, obviously, folks have already invested so much in that area and much more to be invested. But we do, we should do our diligence to try to allow people to have a say of some of the potential things that they'd like to, um, to go there, or just be aware of it. I mean, in, in, in light of what we're still dealing with right now, people are still locked in, people are still worrying about other things, and this is going on, and we're moving ahead. I just think we should, um, we owe it to the folks to let them know that these are some serious, um, proposals before us. And if no one willing to come and give testimony, then, you know, we have, um, we've done what we can. But I think we need to go far and beyond in giving the residents the opportunity to be aware of these really drastic changes we're about to make for support.
Okay.
Thank you.
I wanted to, I wanted to mention tonight that in addition to these amendments, um, we do have on the agenda, the amendment to increase the number of marijuana licenses would also be voted on. I know that we have a lot of zoning, uh, marijuana zoning-related amendments that night. The amendment that is proposed by myself um, is to increase the number of licenses from four total to six total. Not an additional six, as some may have misinterpreted earlier. But it is to increase the total number of six. So if there's anyone who has any questions regarding that particular issue, um, I think that we had a subcommittee on this issue, a meeting. There seemed to be a general support of this. Uh, city manager was in support of this. And so I put it forth. I'll allow anyone to have any questions regarding this at this moment, either to the city manager or anyone else. Um, but I wanted to make sure that that was- that was, I, I wanted to make sure that that topic was announced as an agenda item, and I wanted to make sure that it was covered.
I have a question, Mr. President, if no one wants to speak.
Yes. Go right ahead, Counselor. What is your question?
Okay, so, um, with the proposal additional two, which would make a total of six, we have four already, correct?
That is correct. We have four currently right now.
Okay, and with the proposals, have we looked at any locations? Do we have any potential locations? Or we just going to, um, assume if someone wants them wherever they fit? Or are we looking to have certain places where we would like to have these potentially two new locations to be?
Well, currently, we have three locations that I believe are tied up. Three of the four-
Correct, I'm aware of that. I'm aware of the four. I'm just talking about the two that you're speaking of.
Right. I believe, I believe three of the four are currently tied up.
Yeah.
Um, and then we have, I think, the only two petitions that I've heard so far, in addition, or have had community host meetings, has been uh, a proposal for the Central Latino and a proposal for Second Street. Those are the only other two that I am aware of. I don't have, I don't see, um, Cheryl Watson to discuss who else has been talked, but I think there has been a lot of discussion about actually deliveries more than these licenses, but that's another matter to be covered at another point in time.
So, so, so maybe I should just be a little clearer. Um, as we're looking at these potential zoning changes and approval of these zoning changes, do we see any marijuana establishment, not delivery, going into these or these zoning changes that we're looking to make tonight or at our next meeting? Maybe if you can answer that, the city manager or Mr. DePries can answer. Do they conform? Will they fit into any existing proposal we're proposing?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that question? I didn't hear it.
So the two new, um, establishments, um, Counselor President is speaking of, do any of those two, would they fit in any of the proposals that we will make on these zoning changes?
No, there is no, all the proposed change would do is, in the future, allow for the city to license six as opposed to four.
I understand that. I understand. I'm just talking about-
There's nothing before the city. In fact, we don't have anything other than the three that have been approved before us. I am not aware of any other proposal yet that's been, that has come before the city.
Actually, I think, I think Counselor Ro- uh-
Brown.
Brown, sorry. Um, if we do amend, uh, rather, approve the amendment for the Broadway Business Zone to approve, then one of the proposals, which is the Central Latino, who already has had a community meeting, would then qualify as a zone, an area that would be now allowed. Even though they have already had a community meeting, the site that they have been talking about, both here and into the public, actually is not currently allowed. So if we were to vote in favor of allowing marijuana retail in the Broadway area, then that one would benefit. That's the only one. The, the, the other, the other one-
But you're saying they had sufficient parking there?
Um, again, I don't know if it needs the parking because it's Broadway.
Okay.
And the only other one, the, the second one that had a community host agreement was the one proposal for Second Street, and that is an allowed area. So nothing that we vote for changes that.
That wasn't my question, though.
Okay.
My question was, do we have, under the proposed amendments that we're about to vote on, whether it's the next meeting, do any of these, the additional, not the four that we've already aware of, but the two, will they be allowed to fit into any of those? Because we have to know where these potential places are going prior to voting.
No one has come before me with a proposal.
We don't know.
All you would do is you'd be opening up the retail business district for that opportunity. But I don't know where people might go or what they would propose.
Okay, so that's, that's, that's a fair answer. So we move forward, net, uh, we move forward, we vote on these proposals. Um, they come back, we allow the two marijuana existed, now we have four, four plus two is six. And now we may have to entertain a special permit to have it, a marijuana establishment somewhere else, correct?
There, yes, it's all by special permit. You cannot get a, in any district, it's not as a matter of right. So all of these districts require that someone seeking a marijuana retail store must seek a special permit. And that would be true, that would be true in the retail, in the Broadway Retail Business District, just as it is true in the other three districts.
All right, that's all my question.
Um, I just wanna make comments. I understand that at the last, when this subject matter came up, or these amendments came up, um, there were two amendments that were proposed, one by myself and one by Counselor Robinson. You already know my proposal, and then I've discussed it tonight. That is, um, I plan on proposing an amendment to withdraw the maritime uses in the Portland Upland. So that has been covered. If anyone has any questions, let me know. But that amendment has been talked about. There was a Second Amendment proposed, and that was by Counselor Robinson on parking to address the fact that I had, I had proposed to strike the, um, Section Six of the downtown parking because the planning board had rejected it. Counselor Robinson had his own amendment, and if he wants to talk about it at this moment, I'll give him the floor so that he can explain what his amendment will do.
Actually, I'd be very brief. My amendment addresses the fact that we're trying to develop Broadway. So we're gonna be building on top of some of the commercial spaces. And we do not have parking to accommodate any development that's built on top of any of the commercial space. So I had been in some conversations with the traffic people about looking at creating a retail, um, parking district that would accommodate any new development that would be built, um, downtown on Broadway. And that would include only one residential sticker per unit. And to be allowed in any, any of those developments. So if there was, uh, four units being built, there can only be four residential, um, tickets, parking stickers for that area. And that's what my proposal would be if, if presented and the council would have an opportunity to vote on it up or down.
So again, I see that Counselor Recupro and Counselor Vidal have raised their hands. So Counselor Recupro, if you have a question through the chair.
If, if they build all down, oh, on Broadway, right? Can we force these developers to create parking underneath? If we, can, can we make them? Because it seems to be a big issue is the parking issue. And now that you've put the line in the middle, it's even gonna be even worse with the, 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 the bus lanes, right? Because, can we make them say, you're gonna build, but we want you to build underneath? Can we make them all? As if, I always hear, it's not feasible to do. It's too expensive.
The ZBA could not grant zoning relief for parking. And then they could either, they would probably have to either abandon the project or go deep down.
What if we make them do it, right? Would they still do, you think it's, if we say we want you to, is it gonna deter from them building?
Possibly.
Yeah, that's a market decision. I would say probably yes, but I don't know for certain. Most developers have said, developing the kind of underground parking that you need to get to one point five spaces per unit in the downtown is cost prohibitive. That's a, one point five spaces is a high parking ratio, and that's what the ratio is in the downtown.
But would it deter them? That's what I mean. You think it would hurt our chances of getting more development?
I'm sure there's differences of opinion on that. I would say my opinion is yes.
Thank you.
Um, Counselor Vidal.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a couple of things. Um, with respect to what Counselor Robinson just said, wouldn't that undermine our existing ordinance, uh, for residential parking when you are granted zoning relief? Or are we looking to put an amendment simply in the Broadway area? I, I just want some clarity around this because we can't say, we can't all pass an ordinance and then try to pass something that counters that, and I'm a bit confused.
So I would say this. I propose this, it, the intent was not to undermine the council's vote. The council's vote was clear that whenever you get zoning relief, your residents cannot become part of the residential parking sticker program. In essence, that pretty much means that these people can't park overnight, because most of our, there are some areas where we have twenty-four seven enforcement, but in most areas of the city, parking enforcement is overnight between twelve and five AM. You cannot park your car on the street without a residential sticker. And your, your ordinance basically says, if you built a development and got parking relief, your tenants cannot take part in that program. What I was trying to do was carve out a very small, narrow exception to that citywide council ordinance that basically said, for downtown development, and we would identify what the downtown was for purposes of this, I think it could be the retail business district, we would create an area for people to park overnight. So presumably, we could say, the two new lots that the city is getting under the Tobin Bridge at night will be set aside for people, for not just every resident, because they will be set aside for all residents, but residents can have both a residential sticker or this special sticker for downtown residents who- who otherwise don't qualify for the residential sticker. And those people would have at least 100 spaces where they could park. It's a little, it might be a little bit of a walk to their building, but at least they wouldn't be foreclosed from having a car and living in the downtown.
You weren't looking, you weren't looking to undermine the council's ordinance, you were just looking to undermine it in a specific area.
To create an exception for downtown development, yes.
Framing is everything, Mr. Ambrosino. Okay. The, the other thing I want to say is that parking lot under the bridge that DOT or the MBTA gave us, you have offered those parking spots to everyone and their mother. And every single conversation we have, you're like, hey, we have a parking lot here, we have a parking lot there. And at some point, Mr. Ambrosino, we have to be real that that space is, there is a capacity. Okay. Counselor Avellaneda, Mr. President, I have a question that is prob, I'm not sure if it's for you or if it's for the city manager with respect to the maritime amendment that you're proposing. I know the city manager said, look, I just want to make sure that in case, you know, somebody needs to fix a boat on this side of the land, that we're covered, right? So my, my question is, is there a requirement by law in order for us to have this maritime use on the side of the land that's not water?
No. And quite frankly, I'm going to say, when it comes to, again, we talk about, in my opinion, what is the maximum, the idea of proper zoning is to get the highest and best use because you want to see development and tax income so that it can help pay for all the services that the city must provide. So I, again, historically, will, I'm a different opinion than our city manager as far as seeing 50 years of non-maritime use across the street, even though it's been zoned. And I don't think that those uses really are really high tax income type of properties. But again, I mean, if someone can show me, if someone can show me a fish plant that provides high taxes, I'd be willing to take a look at it. But I haven't seen one. If anything, the one in East Boston does nothing but just be a messy, smelly neighbor to everybody else, but...
I do want to add one thing, though, just in fairness. Most of these uses that were allowed by special permit, there's a couple of exceptions, but in most cases, these are things that are currently allowed in that district right now, in that waterfront district. So for instance, the food processing one, that is allowed there right now by special permit. We're just not changing it. But you could put a no in there. I'm just saying that in most of these cases where we've kept these uses, they are uses that currently are allowed in that waterfront district on that side by special permit.
Right.
Okay.
And I'm just looking at zoning out, that's all.
I just want to make a quick comment and, well, two quick comments. The, the third one is with respect to the marijuana licenses. I just want to remind the city council that the, the city council also passed an ordinance a couple of years back that required 50% of our marijuana licenses to go to either social equity or economic empowerment, which would mean that instead of two of the four, now would be three of the six. In case anyone was not aware. And lastly, I know that one of my colleagues mentioned that we should do more in terms of outreach because, you know, in a pandemic, everybody's so busy. But, you know, we only sent these zoning amendments to Subcommittee on Conference because things were confusing when it came before us, when it, when it did. But we've already had meetings and hearings and subcommittees, and I just, you know, we can't stop government. I mean, at the end of the day, I think that we've had, we've done our due diligence in making sure that we're holding these meetings. I am grateful we're having them again, but, you know, at some point, I just, you know, we need to be held accountable to ourselves because we've had all this information for weeks. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you, Mr. President.
Counselor Garcia and then Counselor Brown.
Thank you, Council President. I'll actually give the floor to Counselor Brown, Counselor Vidal, and ask one of the questions I want answered. So thank you.
Okay. Counselor Brown.
Yeah, I just got a quick question for the city manager. You know, at our last meeting, we had a lot of passionate speakers talk about, you know, affordable homes and housing for folks in our rental. And, you know, we get this Miranda from our legal department telling us about the new law that makes it easier now for, to get a vote to reduce the two-thirds vote. Obviously, it's to get more apartments and more housing in the community. Does any language that we're making in these, any of these proposals state that if any development is over 12 units, that you have to have a certain amount of home ownership buyers or ability to, you know, say for instance, if you have 36 units, are they all going to be rental? Are we going to ask them to give some home ownership where we can have the discussion that we had last week about folks that want to work here and also be able to buy here and live here? If not, I believe a lot of these proposals that potentially is going to follow under these new zoning tax changes, I'm, I'm quite sure 90, if not more percentage of them will be rental units. And I just want to be able to try to keep some of our residents here. And I think we should have some of that language in this proposal somewhere, and I just don't hear it or I don't see it.
So there is nothing in any of the zoning amendments before you that mandates that with residential development, any particular percentage must be owner, a home ownership versus rental? Honestly, I would, I'm not sure such an ordinance could pass a legal muster, but I guess that's a question for the city solicitor. I would be skeptical whether a city has the authority to put requirements in that certain housing units be ownership ones versus rental ones. But that's a question, I guess, for the city solicitor.
Okay, but we did deal with the footprint program on Central Ave. They did, I mean, Chelsea Housing Units, they did give a certain percentage of home ownership. How did we get that done?
I'm sorry, can you repeat the question?
With the property under the Chelsea Housing, it's already down on the Central Ave. That property, a percentage of those units will be owner ownership. Is that correct?
Not the in its redevelopment, no. Those are all, those are all apartments, some of which are affordable, 96 Housing Authority units, and the balance are all rental units at various levels of market rent.
All right, I got it. Next step. So a portion of them will be low market for Chelsea residents. Is that correct?
Yes. You know, I will say that when people come for a special permit, we do encourage them that it would make, you know, the board is likely to look more favorably on a proposal if it has some home ownership element to it. And that was certainly the case on Sixth Street where some, in that affordable unit development, there's some home ownership. It was the case at Forbes, whether that's ever getting built, I don't know. But there, a large percentage of those units that were approved are required by the agreed-upon special permit to be home ownership. So the board does have some authority to negotiate when a developer comes in and is looking for zoning relief. But it's not possible for the city, I don't believe, to mandate a percentage of ownership in a zoning ordinance.
Well, I understand that. That's why, that's why I bring it up because, again, the two units that was mentioned was, you know, the One North and the West Ave Project, and both of those projects are huge, and neither of those projects offered any, and we didn't offer any. We, we didn't have any kind of conversation about it. And I think what's going to happen, especially on Vail Street, you're going to have the same thing that's happened. And if you ever get something down on the waterfront, you're going to have the same thing, and we're going to be watching other residents and workers in the city because they can't afford the rent and they can't afford to buy. And we're not doing anything at this point about it.
I, I just don't think you can get to that goal via a zoning ordinance.
Okay, thank you.
So before we invite, I see a former colleague and former president here and patiently waiting to talk. I just want to make sure that we make, Roseanne Bon Giovanni is here. I want to make sure that something is not lost here tonight, folks. And, and I think that deserves credit from both the city manager and his staff for working this in. And that is, and also talk about the potential numbers here. Because again, when we talk about how much rental we're building versus ownership, it is a valid question, and some arguments being made that it is not being done enough. But in Amendment Number Seven, in the overlay district, yes, we are allowing a height of 100 feet, which is not normal in the other residential zones. But with that, and having, you know, a higher density there and a lower car count because we're doing one per unit, and quite frankly, that area of the city doesn't have a parking problem, so it's justified. There is a bonus density there. And that means if the developer chooses to be denser than what is already allowed, they are going to have to provide more affordable units than the zone, than our amendments already have in place. So I want the city manager, one, to just emphasize this one part one more time. And second, can you give us an idea of the comprehensive number that we are looking at? If you talk about the potential of the development of Stop and Shop, what this area would cover, what wood waste would cover, that area, what is the number of units that we're looking at? And in addition to the total number, how many possible units of those would be affordable?
So I, I don't know how many units could conceivably be built on the Everett side. It's really hard to tell. I mean, on the, on the Chelsea side. I mean, the Everett side, they've permitted over 1,000 units already in that area that's on the Chelsea border. I don't think any of them are affordable. I don't think Chelsea...
So Everett built 1,000 and not one affordable?
What they proposed.
I don't believe Everett has an affordability requirement.
They had one, but I think it changed. They did have one at one point, and then 5%.
I just don't know. But there's a, they have approved over 1,000 units in that area that is on the Chelsea border.
Yeah. So what about our side? What are we looking at? What are, what are you, what numbers are you hearing, expecting, you know, from Stop and Shop and this overlay district?
Yeah, I think the, we haven't really talked to any of the other developers here. On the Stop and Shop side, I think we were talking about maybe 100 odd units at most that could be built. I mean, it's a fairly small piece that's in, in Chelsea. And I think they were looking at, we were trying to encourage some development on that side. And so this zoning change is necessary to do that because right now, as I've said, as you know, there is no residential use allowed on that Chelsea portion of that site. And so, but they have been talking at most of about 100 units there.
Okay, so 15 on that, maybe, 15 affordable units. But what about the, the rest of this side where the Tomato Warehouse is and all that? Whatever rest of the area, does anyone come forward? Where, where we're talking about 100 feet height, has anyone talked at all?
No one has come forward yet in looking to develop. We've had, we had some developers in before we proposed this a year or so ago, not even longer, maybe two years ago, that were, I know, talking to some of the owners. They were talking to the owner of the Tomato Company, but nothing ever materialized. So I just don't know.
But based on, let's say, if someone's to look at the lot size and say that's equal or similar to the size of like, say, Chelsea, Chelsea Clark, you know, can we get a guesstimate? I mean, we were looking at 500, 400, is it like similar to a One North size?
I don't know. The density we've proposed is equivalent. It's, that was what we were looking at, One North as the equivalent. And so that's the density we've proposed. It's less than, it's less than the Fairfield Development, which is at 80 units an acre. What we're proposing is 50 outside of the bonus density. And so it's more, it is along the density of One North. That's precisely the, the comp we were looking at.
Is the, is it, it's the density of One North, but is it the size of One North? Is it that large of a parcel that we're looking at?
So some, the parcels, there's a requirement here that you have at least an acre. You can't build on less than an acre in this overlay, under this overlay. So it's 50 units an acre. So you'd have to have the acreage to build at least 50 units.
Okay.
Yeah, we're not allowing small, we're asking people, in a lot of these situations, this overlay district will demand that developers combine parcels. But I don't know, I don't think we've done a bill, like a full bill, though, as to what this conceivably could be if every person maximized the build-out. We have not done that.
Okay. Former Counselor Bon Giovanni, you've been patiently waiting there. Do you have any questions for this group, the colleagues, or for, or the, John De Priest or the city manager?
I don't have any questions. You know, patience is a virtue that I was blessed with. I know you all know that. I, I think that, that you all need to think long and hard about this density question. I actually think that this is a big mistake that the council is about to embark on. If you vote in favor of increasing the density and reducing the lot size, I would like you to think long and hard about learning from our mistakes of the past. Chelsea is the second most densely populated city in the entire state. And if you look at how our city is zoned, residents are only 37% of our entire city. So essentially, we're jamming all of our residents in 37% of 1.8 square miles. We are one of the most densely populated cities in the entire state. I want you to think back to this time last year when we were just about to go into lockdown. Where did residents go? They were trapped in apartments with no side yards, no backyards. Some didn't even have porches. We are continuing to increase density, reduce lot size. We're wiping out our open space. Our children are growing up in a city with virtually no open space. As we've continued to increase the development in this city, we have not, we have not had an equivalent amount of open space as we're increasing the residential development. And this is a big mistake. I think in 10 years' time, you're going to look back and say, what an awful tragic mistake we made. We're maxing out all of the, the impervious surfacing. We're maxing out house sizes. We're seeing on Crescent Ave, a single family be wiped out and replaced with 10 units. The joke in our neighborhood, our, our neighbors are all older, and they say, Roseanne, when we go, there's going to be a hotel here because our yards are big. And, and they're going to come in and they're going to max out all of this open space. What are we saying to our kids? There, there's research that shows if kids are seeing green space, their mental health improves, their academic attainment improves, quality of life improves. You all, we're investing money on heat, on heat island mitigation work, right? We're investing in climate, we're investing in preventing displacement of our residents, but yet we are opening the gates for the developers. Who are we reducing these lot sizes for? I, I disagree with the city manager. It is not for the residents of this city. It's for developers who want to come in and make quick cash and get the hell out. Let's learn, as Counselor Avellaneda said, let's learn what they're doing in East Boston. In East Boston, they're buying up three family homes. I see it every single day. My colleague lives in East Boston. He said on his neighborhood, their civic association the other night, there were 12 developments in his neighborhood. Every single month, there are 12 developments. They take three family old homes and they max them out and put seven and eight units. No side yards, no front yards, no trees. Is that what we want? They're going in and taking these units and selling them for $700,000, $800,000. We're, we're basically standing here at this time and day and saying, we value our residents. We don't want to see them displaced. We don't want to see them evicted. We want to put forward these rental assistance programs. We're all coming together a million times a week to talk about preventing displacement of our residents. But yet we are opening the floodgates for investors to come in and just max out on Chelsea and, and put more and more and more burdens on the backs of the lowest-income folks who have shouldered an unbelievably disproportionate burden. And I feel very strongly... And I feel very strongly about this density question and increasing density and reducing lot sizes. I think like Council President Avellaneda, if there are places along the waterfront like Forbes and other places where you could have some residential uses, put them there, but balance it with open space. Why, why, I ask you, are we blitzing out our neighborhoods just for investors and not for the people of this city? If you are truly going to move forward with increasing density, do it for affordability. Look at the waterfront districts, look at all of those former industrial areas and say, let's, let's make these areas zones that are just for clean, new, affordable housing so that folks aren't doubled and tripled and quadrupled up in homes, that they actually have a nice place to live where they can breathe cleaner air, where they can play outside. We need to learn from the mistakes of the last year. And if we just go about business as usual, we're going to look back on this period and say, we made a big mistake, and we will have said goodbye to all of our neighbors and friends that we've worked so hard for. So I ask you to think about these questions that are in front of you and that will be in front of you on Monday evening. Thank you.
Colleagues, Councilor Robinson.
John. John, in the overlay district, does that include the Peter Pan property?
It does.
It does? All right, thanks.
I don't see any other hand, I'm sorry, Damali, did you have another question? Because I see your hand is still upraised on the on-screen, so, okay. No? Okay. Any other questions, folks? Seeing none. All right, everyone. Council Robinson, I'm sorry, Council Brown.
Yeah, I personally agree with the past speaker. I think we should just take our time with this. I see a lot of potential, but I just don't see a lot of benefit for the residents of Chelsea. I'm, you know, I really sat there and I listened to a lot of my colleagues, and we were all upset and we were kind of, you know, harsh on, you know, folks having to move out of the city. But again, you know, these are some major, major drastic changes that we will make, and they will have an impact in years to come. And I just think we should have more residents input. And I, you know, agree, I have no disrespect for my colleagues who said that we should move forward, but I think in times like these, we need to really take our time with this year. I mean, you know, developers are lining up. And, you know, one of the things you said about the potential parcel, if it's not as big as One North, how can we imagine it to be that size? Because we reduce all the requirements. We've taken away a lot to make them have more. But again, we just don't still have stability where we can have home ownership there. At one point, neighborhood developers, they was coming in, they were doing some home development, home ownership. Now it's more, over the last few years, it's more rental, rental, rental. And if we have some spots, we should, we should try to get some. You know, maybe even if it's a percentage, we should try to get some. And I just think it's really, you know, I know the city above us, the department has been, the executive board, they're trying to create this city for what it could be. But look at East Boston, and again, look at Everett. Everett doesn't have anything to state that they have to have a certain affordability. None of those departments will be affordable. Where people going to try to come? Chelsea. And you're not going to be having them there. So I think, you know, we have a big task before us. I mean, we have a big mantle to carry, and that's a big stick. You know, I think we should really give it some more, I wish we had more residents to hear from, and I'm sure there are more residents out there, but there's a lot going on. People quitting. You know, there's a lot going on, you know? We're fortunate that we can have, have this time to discuss these things, but, I mean, there's a lot going on. Some communities are not even reading as much as we are. Never mind making votes that's going to change the dynamics of their city for years to come. So I think we should really consider putting more, some more time into this. And again, I don't want to ramp on, but it's just a statement, not a question. Thank you.
Seeing no further questions or statements, I wanted to appreciate John and Carl. I know you're out there attending family business. Appreciate you taking the time out there. And the city manager, and obviously our staff are preparing all the notes and everything. So thank you, and we'll be seeing all you on Monday, the 8th. We will have a public hearing on this, and then we'll have the votes and the, make sure we're going to try to do this in an orderly fashion. We'll number each of the votes by its individual amendment, what the amendment is, and we'll have, and that way we can declare which ones will need a supermajority vote versus just a majority vote. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Good night, everybody.
All right.